Special promotion for two men that are absolutely vital to our organization. And I think it's an honor to be able to do this before you guys tonight. And I think you, I told a few, I always felt like I'm turning my back to you, but they have family and friends here tonight. So I'm gonna turn this sideways if you don't mind and try to position it where you guys can witness it, or they can as well. I'd like to ask my lieutenant to join me, Lieutenant Rhodes. He's looking sharp tonight. Lieutenant Rhodes is in, he just completed his fifth week of eight weeks of, say the title of the class.
Executive leadership.
Executive leadership. And that is absolutely, he's the first officer to ever go through this particular leadership training. And I'm very proud of his dedication to that, absolutely. I want to invite up Sergeant Dylan Higdon, who's just a new sergeant, come on up. I started referring to him as officer, but he's got the stripes on there and he's already got the credentials to do it. So he's a sergeant. Why don't you join me right up here Dylan, if you don't mind? Again, I apologize because it feels like I have my back turned towards you.
You're fine.
Dylan has been with Wilmer Police Department for six years now. And boy, it's just been a blessing to us. He has achieved an intermediate peace officer certification. He's a basic instructor for our department. He's a field training officer. He has active shooter training instructor certification. Our department has really gone hard after getting training for alert training, as I've shared with you guys in the past. He is alert, this is just recent, an alert first responder medical trained trainer. So he has a certification to train others in our department. There's not a lot of departments in our area that have as many trained trainers. Most departments send officers out for training. We're doing a lot of internal training and inviting other agencies to come and do the same. And he's a big part of that. He has well over 100 hours of alert training, that's active shooter training. He has an associate's degree. He's got 1,349 TECO, Texas Commissioner of Law Enforcement hours. TECO also recognizes higher learning time as well. So his total training hours with TECO, they recognize as 2,589. I'm gonna take an opportunity just to embarrass him a bit, maybe, hope not. I remember the very first time, I'd never even heard Dylan's name mentioned, going to church in Ennison. We had been in the class unbeknownst to me with his mom and dad, Ken and Brandy are here this evening again. Before one service, I saw his mom coming across, you know, sanctuary there, and I didn't know what she was up to. She come and talked to me, she said, so she said, I understand you're the police chief in Wilmer. I said, yes, I am. And she said, my son, you know, he's a certified officer, he's looking to land somewhere. I said, well, have him come see me. I will never forget then, first time you sat in my office across from me. And I knew at that moment, there was something different about you, or something special about you. And boy, have you proven me right. He was a leader from day one almost. He just fit in, he has served our community with integrity. He is the epitome of our mission statement, to serve with honor and to protect with vigilance. And he's been a mentor to the men and women of this department. Come on. He's a servant. He's got a servant's heart. And I appreciate watching your growth so much. It's just been a pleasure. I'll get you if you will. Face me, raise your right hand, and repeat after me. Aye, state your name. Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the position.
Duties of the position.
Of a police sergeant.
Of a police sergeant.
Of the city of Wilmer.
City of Wilmer.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect.
Preserve, protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the state of Texas.
And of the ordinances of this city.
And of the ordinances of this city.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
As I accept this position of sergeant.
As I accept this position of sergeant.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always maintain.
I will always maintain.
The highest ethical standards.
The highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of my community.
And uphold the values of my community.
And the agency that I serve.
And the agency that I serve.
So help me God.
Good job Dylan.
I'm gonna invite his fiancee Maggie up to do the honor, pending the sergeant's badge, on Sergeant Dylan. From the bottom of my heart, I just want to congratulate you, Sergeant Dylan Blade Higdon. What a job you've done.
Thanks, sir.
Appreciate you, my friend. I'd like now to invite Sergeant Richard Hernandez up to join us. Sergeant Hernandez has been in law enforcement for eight years. And he's served as citizens and community in the Wilmer Police Department for the last six years. He has an advanced peace officer certification. He also is a basic instructor. He's a field training officer. He too, has been to the active shooter training course and has a certification. He has well over 100 hours also of alert training. He also, there's, we would be here all night if I told you all the training this man has gotten over the last years. He has 40 hours of effective leadership training that he got through the Tarrant County Sheriff's Academy. Through the Texas Municipal Police Association. Think about, he has 152 hours and is this agency's very first certified drug recognition expert. Yeah, it's kind of a big deal. And I appreciate him for doing that. I chose Sergeant Hernandez along with Lieutenant Rhodes some couple of years ago to go to Leamont Law Enforcement Management Institute of Texas at San Jose State University to become certified and train in in public information officers along with myself. We are the three that represent the police department. And sometime after you had that, unfortunately, we had a major fatality traffic accident where multiple people were killed. And the news leaders, they do, they show up bright and early that morning. And I got here and I thought, this is an opportunity to allow him to put his training to work. And boy, did you represent our department with honor and professionalism and dignity in a moment of crisis and tragedy for those families that were affected. I told you thank you then, I tell you thank you now. Proud to have you on board Sergeant. There was just an impromptu opportunity that we just had recently with the death of one of our first police chief, Frank Patta. Not having a lot of notice and not having an honor guard, I leaned on Sergeant Hernandez and Chaplain Officer Nathan Bickerstaff and asked him, could they do something to honor the flag in that opportunity? He immediately went to work. And I watched them in a room practicing. And all the things that they did was just an honor to watch how diligent you are about serving not only your community, but your fellow officers and all of our family here in our community. And that's just a hearty guy. I could talk about him all night long, all the good things. He's been a friend and a brother, proud to work beside you Sergeant Hernandez. Lieutenant over here just does an amazing job as a third-in-command. But as our department has grown, we saw the need for more leadership staff. And so tonight, it's my honor to promote Sergeant Hernandez to Senior Sergeant of the Patrol Division as he steps into more of an administrative role. Can you raise your right hand? Aye.
Aye.
State your name.
Richard Hernandez.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the position.
The duties of the position.
Of a senior police sergeant.
Of a senior police sergeant.
Of the city of Wilmer.
Of the city of Wilmer.
State of Texas.
State of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
And the state of Texas.
And the state of Texas.
And the charter and ordinances of this city.
Charter and ordinances of this city.
On my honor.
On my honor.
I will never betray my integrity.
I will never betray my integrity.
My character.
My character.
Or the public trust.
Or the public trust.
As I accept this position of senior sergeant.
As I accept this position of senior sergeant.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself and others accountable.
To hold myself and others accountable.
For our actions.
For our actions.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
I will always maintain the highest ethical standards.
And uphold the values of our community.
And uphold the values of our community.
And the agency that I serve.
And the agency that I serve.
So help me God.
So help me God.
And I am going to do the honor. I can't afford to get Maggie to do it. Thank you, sir. Mayor, Mayor, Detective Counsel, thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, sir. Before I go to the next item, I think Michael Holla, our city attorney, has something to say.
No, that's for the consent agenda.
Huh?
Before the consent agenda.
Okay. At this time, the swearing in of our new city secretary. Ms. Suzie Quinn, please swear in, Kristen Downs, as our new city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I might, at this moment, I'd just like to say, this has been a true blessing to have worked here at the city of Wilmer for each of you and to work with Rona and to work with City Attorney Holla. It has been a delight. And I am leaving you in extremely good hands with Kristen coming on board. She has some, also has done a lot of certifications. She has her Texas Registered Municipal Clerks and is working toward her CMC and is also working toward her bachelor's, so degree. So she's, and with that, we'll go ahead and have her raise her right hand. Please repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Kristen Downs.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the city secretary.
The duties of the city secretary.
Of the city of Wilmer.
Of the city of Wilmer.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
The laws of this city.
The laws of this city.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, good. Community announcements. Ms. Kristen Downs, our city secretary, presents the item.
Mayor, if I might take the point of privilege, Ms. Suzie, we just wanted you to know how much we appreciate you and the service that you've given to the city of Wilmer. It has been our absolute honor to work with you, to work with a professional that is, has a servant's heart. We hope that maybe we can do business in the future, once you come back from vacation.
Anything time soon, Kristen.
But you definitely have left an impact in our organization. And we just wanted you to know that publicly, from a staff standpoint. And I think maybe some of the council members may have wanted to express as well.
Ms. Suzie, being the mayor, it has been my honor to work with you. I'll be glad when you get back. But I have enjoyed, you've taught me a lot. And I do appreciate what you have done. And thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
I'd like to say something.
Pull your mic down. Pull it down.
I've really been impressed with working with you or being around you and you being able to answer any question I needed and helpful and right on top of everything. And I hate to see you leave. I hope, I hope you have a great trip that you're looking forward to, so.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Quinn, I'm just gonna give you this, this comment. I've worked on your Wikipedia page. And when it says, professional city secretary, I'm gonna post your picture over there on the side of it. And then I will fill out all the rest of the blanks with all the accolades and all the strengths that you've shown this city.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Pull your mic down.
I would like to say, Suzie, Kristen, you have a hard act to follow. But we have all the confidence in the world that you'll do it quick. Good luck and have fun.
Thank you.
And that's what I was going to say. We appreciate you, the drive every day, back and forth. That was a pretty long drive each, each way, but we appreciate you coming to Wilmer. And we hope you have a wonderful, restful trip. Be safe.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Suzie, thanks.
Well, say it loud enough that she can hear.
And, and I wanted to add, I work with a lot of city secretaries. And, you know, I haven't seen each other in a while, but you make it very easy. So, I mean, I, I may not necessarily know after twenty-six years, who a good city secretary is. I know what a bad one is. You ain't a bad one. And so I appreciate what you do for me too. You, you actually, you know, don't mind my long-winded email answers to your questions. And you actually read them and we go back and forth. And I, I'll miss that, so I appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Election update. For the May 3, 2025 election, the Wilmer Community Center will serve as a polling location. Early voting will be available to all registered voters in Dallas County at any designated early voting location. The early voting schedule is as follows. April 22 through 25, 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. April 26, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. April 27, 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. April 28 through 29, 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. For more details, including early voting locations and sample ballots, please visit dallascountyvotes.org.
Thank you. Did we have any citizens to sign up?
Yes, ma'am, Angelica Garcia.
Hello. Good evening.
Give me your name, your address, and you'll have three minutes.
Angelica Garcia, 128 North Dallas Avenue, Wilmer, Texas. I'm here today to speak on events that are coming up in Wilmer. This weekend, we will have Grounds for Conversation, Have Coffee with the Mayor, come out, join us. We'll be at this location from 10 to 12. We will have, sorry, also, because I have three minutes, I also wanted to say that our Easter, our annual Easter egg hunt will be happening on April the 12th at Eddie Bernice Johnson. And then on April 26, Wipe Out Waste here at City Hall, or City Square. We are actively looking for volunteers to help us clean our parks and our creeks. So that is available to sign up with me. Also inviting the public to also maybe get started on a little spring cleaning. We'll have dumpsters here available as well, so maybe they can clean out and declutter and make this city look beautiful the way we want it to. Also want to say, thank you, Ms. Suzie, for everything that you've done. Thank you for all the help that you've offered to me as well. Nothing goes unnoticed, thank you very much. That's all that I have, thank you.
Any others?
None.
Okay. Mr. Holla, would you like to make a statement now?
Oh, on the consent agenda, yeah, thank you, thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it. So on the consent agenda, as you can see, there are several minutes from many meetings. And I don't think it's any secret that previously, before Ms. Downs and Ms. Quinn, we had an issue of not having minutes done. Well, the law is pretty clear, the government code 501, or excuse me, 551, 021 and 022 are pretty clear about cities must, it's a, it's a must, keep minutes of meetings. And so it's my fault that these items are on the agenda. But I asked Ms. Downs and Ms. Quinn if they wouldn't mind, and they were, they like to humor at me at times, and I appreciate that very much. So they worked very hard to go back, listen to the meetings that were, that were on there, and watch the videos. And just basic minute stuff, like, hey, this was the agenda item, this was the motion made by council member, whoever, seconded by council member. This was the, the vote. That, that's basically what the minutes entail, so there's not a lot of detail or anything like that. I understand that some council members may not have been there, but these aren't, and I mean, y'all have the right to abstain if you want to abstain, but these also aren't a bunch of facts specific and a bunch of details. It is just a record of what the city did at those meetings. And I don't really have an issue when that's all it is, is this is the item, this is who made the motion, this is who seconded it, and this was the vote. That's just good record-keeping of the, on the city's part. And so, like I said, Ms. Downs and Ms. Quinn were very, 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 very gracious and very, very nice. Because they've got plenty to do, but they, they kind of put up with me and did this so we could bring this to you. Because again, as y'all know, for quite a while, that's been a normal deficiency in us and not having the minutes. So that's why they're on the agenda tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Mayor.
Number one, consider approval of minutes from the council meeting, from a city council regular, September 1, 2022, city council meeting. Number two, consider approval of minutes from the joint city council and P and Z meeting held April 6, 2023. Number three, consider approval of minutes from the city council regular meeting, February 6, 2025, city council meeting. Number four, consider approval of minutes from the city council special, February 20, 2025, council meeting. Number five, consider approval of minutes from the city council regular, February 20, 2025, city council meeting. Number six, consider approval of minutes from the March 20, 2025, regular council meeting. Number seven, discuss and consider a resolution authorizing the city administrator to approve a bid for Third Street for the amount not to exceed $255,983
Do we have a motion?
Do I have a motion?
Okay, are we gonna do these one at a time, or we're gonna?
It's a consent. Move to approve.
May I get a second?
A second.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd like to abstain from one and two, I wasn't. Abstain from both of them, ma'am.
On one and two? Okay, thank you.
All right, and that's fine if Councilmember decide wants to do that. But the consent agenda is supposed to be either approved or not approved as a whole. So maybe what you would want to do is make a motion to pull items one and two from the consent agenda, and we could deal with them individually. That would be, that would be appropriate.
Okay, okay, okay.
Okay, so we're pulling one and two.
Not to be a, you know, they already have a motion and a second.
May I amend? May I amend my motion? If I may amend my motion, Mayor. I move to approve items three through seven of the consent agenda.
May I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay.
Now we're gonna talk about one and two.
Okay.
Please vote on three through seven.
Yeah.
Oh, I thought we did. I'm sorry.
Yes.
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 It is five to zero. Okay.
Mayor, I make a motion to approve items one and two of the consent agenda.
A second.
May I get a motion?
Vote.
A vote.
I'd like to abstain my vote. I wasn't here at that time.
Yes.
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 Okay, it's three, four to one. Okay, do we want to discuss these items? Okay. Action. Number eight, discuss and consider approving ordinance number 2025-0331A, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter One. General Provisions, Act, Article 1.02, Administration, Division Two, Records Manager by adding Section 1.02.047, entitling ownership and custody of the city records and Section 1.02.048, entitling. zero two point zero four eight, entitling electronic storage of city records.
The one Ms. Downs. Sorry. Mayor and Council, this item is being brought forward to approve the city's records management practices and to ensure we are in full compliance with state requirements for record ownership, storage, and preservation. Section one point zero two point zero four seven, ownership of and custody, custody of city records establishes that all records created, received, or maintained by city departments, regardless of the format or physical location, are the property of the city of, of Wilmer. During recent auditing by the city secretary's office, it was discovered that some records were missing. This section formalizes records ownership and custody responsibilities. I will also need to notify the state about the missing records as part of the compliance with state archival laws. Section one point zero two point zero four eight, electronic storage of city records, provides legal standards for storing official records electronically, reducing the need for physical storage and enabling better record retention and access. This provision allows the city to treat digital records as their original documents, which is especially important in cases where the physical records are missing or deteriorating. It gives us the legal foundation to rely on secure electronic copies moving forward.
Council, you have any questions?
What is actually missing, or what years, other than that?
We have, I think it's two thousand one to twenty fifteen?
Sp- sporadically.
Sporadically through those years, there are ordinances, uh, resolutions and minutes that we cannot locate or find. So I have to take all those to the state and let them know, in case I get an open record request, I need to let them know that we do not have them, and that we are abiding by the laws.
Any other questions?
Have they, have they been codified, ordinances?
The ordinances, yes.
So therefore, the ordinances are in effect. So what does the, what does this provision that we're looking at right now have about, uh, reconstituting or, 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 or reenacting an, uh, a second copy?
So we're looking to see which ones are for, when it comes to the ordinances, and if we have to bring those back to council. So far, we're good on the ordinances, but like contracts and stuff, that, those are missing too, that I need to find. So by me going electronically, it allows me and the city to de-bill those electronic records as the official document. So no matter what happens, I'm still going to keep some of the paper copies, like the ordinances and resolutions and minutes, in case something electronically happens. But this just allows us to have better cap on them and follow the laws.
Thank you.
It should be noted that this occurred before any of current administrative staff in the district, in case that gets out into the community.
Two thousand one?
Two thousand one to twenty fifteen.
Yes.
Are there guidelines that you go by with this, uh, digital storage, this, um...
Yes. We are with the-
Electronic storage that are, this is a vendor?
Yes, we are with the, uh, Texas Library, Texas State Library and Commission, which is TSLAT. So the city, we abide by those laws that they set for all the, the governmental, municipalities, the school districts. We follow those, so the same, that goes for the hard copies, the same rules apply to the electronic copies. It's just up for me to just, uh, teach the city staff how we're gonna file and name that system going forward, and make sure that we are destructing properly.
Okay, so you have access to everything locally, physically?
Yes.
And then it's also stored off-site?
I'm trying to get the ones that are off-site, they will be in my possession, and then they're getting scanned in, so I can deem those the, um, of the, the main documents.
So there will be a?
There will be, and that's what we're working on, is trying to locate all the documents within the city, and if they're on off-site locations. It's just gonna take a lot of time. And Ms. Suzie, who I'm very thankful, and Brittany, have been doing a lot of work on that. So, that's a big project I will be taking on now.
Is our storage facility here close, or do they have to take, take them out of, uh...
I will tell you, I did go with Ms. Rona to look at it, and there was maybe five boxes that were in the storage facility. So I haven't, I found the ones that are located here, and I will be bringing the ones in the storage facility over to City Hall soon. It is locally, it's not far.
Well, on February the second, um, I hadn't had a chance to ask, but there was a box truck backed up to the back door at City Hall. And it, you know, the, it was open, and the guy was standing there, like he was waiting on stuff to come out. So I figured that might be going to the storage building, or going, going, just, you know, cleaning house, or whatever.
I will, I will tell you, nothing has gone to the storage building recently. Um, I know I wasn't here in February, but I have located all those records, and they were probably moving them, them into the locations that I have here.
Did I say February? I meant April the second.
Oh, April the second?
Yes.
Um, I don't-
No, 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 yeah, February the second, I'm a date mix that, but, uh, anyway. It was the, it was two days before the council, you know, before we had a council, maybe.
I will assure you that I know under Ms. Suzie's, um, for a few, like, nobody has taken our records, because we are very, like, those are ours, those are our babies, and we are no, we, yeah.
I know, I, I guess with city records, it's the same with court records.
Exactly.
Tickets and stuff, you, even after you do electronically, you have to keep them.
Yes.
Like five years, or whatever.
Yes, that's the retention that we go off of, and per the policy in which I will be training all the staff, they are supposed to get with me before they destroy anything, so I need to know what's coming in and going out. They cannot do it until they have my approval and my signature and I verify. And that's the same thing with electronic, too. So, yes.
Sounds good.
Is that all the questions? May we get a vote? I need a motion, I'm sorry.
Move to approve, Mayor.
May I have a second?
Second.
May I have a vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Okay, five to zero. It is approved. Number nine, discuss and consider the approval of the October first, twenty twenty-four through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, financial, monthly financials.
Mayor, Madam President, members of council, um, at the March the twentieth regular meeting of the city council, uh, Councilmember Slaw requested that decide and be tabled until this meeting, and, uh, staff is available to answer any questions, uh, and/or we will take, uh, notes, copious notes, and provide answers at the, uh, next meeting if that's, uh, appropriate. Uh, we do have staff that's out, uh, due to illness, and they were not able to be here to be able to answer them on the spot, but we certainly can get information back to the council for specific questions.
Mayor, real quickly, on a procedure point, was this, was this actually tabled from the last meeting? And that's what, okay, so technically, then we do need a motion to untable it, so we can talk about it.
Oh, okay. May I get a m- motion?
Madam-
To untable.
Madam Mayor, I make a motion to untable the recommendation to, to discuss, so that we may discuss the financial statements for, um, October twenty-four through January the twenty-fifth, from the previous council meeting.
Okay, thank you. Council, may I get your vote?
To untable it?
Need a second.
I need a second, I'm sorry.
My second.
Thank you.
I don't need a vote.
Don't need a vote, okay.
You need to vote.
Oh, now, a vote, please.
Yes.
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 It is five to zero. It passes.
This is, this is okay to ask these questions here in open session, I mean, they're open records, so. Uh, and this is over the budget. It, uh, when you go to look into this budget, it, it, it's ridiculous. It is so... In, um, the administration, there are, uh, just to assist the city administrator, uh, assistant administrator, assistant manager, intern, administrative clerk, and then, um, uh, other profi- there's all, and this line items in every department, other professional services. But these, this is four people that's hired to, that what we hired our city administrator for, to do the job. But there's four different positions here, and I think, uh, three of these, from what I've saw here, have been filled. And that's what we hired you for, uh, to do, be the city administrator. But there's, uh, this, this goes on through, uh, each department, um, the finance department. There's three different titles, at three hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars salary, to just pay the bills and, uh, do payroll, and whatever the comes of your, that's necessary to do. Because paying the bills and the salaries, that's, uh, once a week, or the bills normally, once a month. Most of the bills, you have other things that come along. And I went through here, since I get the, I requested this over and over, to get these financials once a month. Get them monthly, then you can just go through there and check them off, and, you know, it's over with. But when you get a stack of them, like, this, and trying to, I did, I took all my personal time, but I, I checked this stuff out. Even on this front sheet, um, it's, it's showing here, the, um...
Councilwoman, uh, Slaw, on that one, that was not included in the public copy. Um, that's personnel, and, um, I respectfully request that that is not...
This is not part of, I'm not bringing up salaries or anything, I'm just bringing up about the vehicles.
Okay.
There was, um, uh, this was one error here, it says take on vehicles, um, in the, um... Then it showed, uh, one take-on vehicle for the police department. There's two brand-new vehicles to take on for the police department. I don't wanna step on nobody's toes, but that's, that's just a correction there.
Not stepping on mine, Judge.
But, uh, and, uh, also, uh, there, there's nothing on here about, um, some of the public works, the, the older public works vehicles, the smart vehicles, are seen in, um, this combine, and going this way, uh, what's that little town on the other side? Anyway, they're seen, they're, they're all over the place, and they're not supposed to be taken out of the town. I mean, out of the city, other than going to lunch, or within a ten-mile radius. And, uh, but that's on that part. And, um, and, and, and that would, the, the financial, that, that's also, um, somebody on there gets a car allowance, and, um, but that's ridiculous, if they're... The most checks wrote through these months here was one month, and I believe it was October. Um, October, there was twelve che- checks issued, other than payroll. And it takes three hundred seventy-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars to issue that many checks? There, some, something's wrong with our finance department. It's too much. Other cities can do this. Um, I talk to people in other cities, and, uh, see how they can, how, can you attend this meeting all week when you've got, uh, bills to pay, since you're the finance person? And one told me, uh, I'm retired, I just, I've just worked, I retired from the city, and, uh, I, I go in, uh, two half-days a week. Pay the bills, do the payroll, I'm through. One person doing that. Uh, and, and this city's probably ten times, or five times, north of the city of Wilmer. Okay, and we have a, and, but this is what I'm saying-
Madam Councilwoman, would you take, would you take a question from me? What ci- what city is that?
Okay, um, Cedar Hill.
With one, with one person in the finance department?
Cedar Hill is one.
One person in the finance department?
Yes, and she's retired, and I talked to her when I, when, and, and my stuff updated. And, uh, and check, you can check with others, 'cause, um, it's-
Is she the only one you spoke with?
Uh, no, I talked to other people, uh, uh...
May I ask the people you have talked to?
Do what?
May I ask the people you have talked to?
I can get you a list, but right now, I'm going over this. If you want a list to check, I'll, I'll be glad to get it for you, and get their names, their names.
I would like to know if you have spoken to them.
Because, you know, you're talking to people, and you're in a group, and we discuss city business.
You're not s-
I mean, not, well, not, you know, how are you, personal, but how are you able to be here at a, uh... You just ask one another questions. Do you take off and work, or what? Well, anyway. Then, um, also through here, uh, the court department. There's no, uh, judge's position listed. But in, in the, uh, financial statements, each month, there's five thousand dollar check issued twice a month, ten thousand dollars, that's issued to the court. So I figure that is the judge's salary, ten thousand a month. Um, 'cause he's not listed anywhere. So, and, uh, that's, it... A hu- hundred and twenty thousand a year for a part-time attorney judge. Um... And-
It's, it's a per- It, it's a personnel matter, and the council hires the judge.
Thank you.
And he was hired after the budget.
Thank you.
No, he was, he's found-
And he is also a judge and a attorney.
And he, and what?
And a attorney.
Uh, I took the place of an attorney judge when I came to the City of Wilmer.
I- i- if I may, if I may, we have never been a court of record. The, the, the judge that we have now makes us a court of records, that, therefore, we can control the, the, the outcomes of the fines and finances, uh, more appropriately than having county do it. So, I'm sure there might be some, uh, additional administrative costs, but it certainly has increased our bottom line in the courts.
You sure has?
Uh, the only difference in, uh, an attorney judge and a non-attorney judge, uh, the, uh, we can sign just about the same thing, um, other than, what is it, the blood warrant, or...
Right, right.
Yes, um, the, the issue we were having was that, um, because we were not a court of record, they could, um, once, uh, Judge, uh, Allen would make a decision, the attorney- The attorneys would, um, understand that we were not a court of record.
They would appeal to, they would appeal to coun- county and then they're.
And we would have to re- refund all of the money after all of the hard work. That our, um, our court courts had made, so it was actually becoming a deficit. Um, where they, a lot of them had gotten. Uh, worried that because we were not a court of record, they could go in and pull it and get all their money back.
And you were on counsel when we hired him?
I wasn't here that night when y'all hired him. Uh, I, I've never met the man, so, uh, I don't have anything against him or anything like that, I'm just going over some of this, um. This, this stuff over here, um. And, uh, that's, that's in, in the finances. And, um. Uh, the court. I guess it's still the runway, I said it years back, uh, it's three times a, a month, two free trials and one trial day. And, um, but, uh. But I, that, him, him not being listed at. The judge not being listed in the budget. And then this ten thousand dollars a month is being, um, sent back to the court, I, that's what I'm, I'm assuming that that is for his salary. So, uh. And he was, he was hired before this budget? I don't know when he was hired.
Well, this council hired him.
But he'd been doing this for a while before he was brought to the council, I, I know that, but before he was brought to council. I, I'm, I'm sure he's, uh, was a judge from Lancaster?
Yes.
He's from Lancaster, yeah, that's what I figured.
What's wrong with the Lancaster?
That's why I fixed it down.
Well, he's, they're close and I used to sign stuff for Lancaster and then Lancaster, you know, we just kind of.
But you weren't on Court of Record Judge's law.
I know I wasn't Court of Records, but if their judge wasn't around and they needed something signed, they would come over for me to sign.
But, but it, it does.
There was limitations of what I could sign.
It does not have the authority as a Court of Record Judge's law.
Oh, I, I know, that, this, you know, there's, there's certain things that you, they need to, they can take it to county to get it signed, or they can take it over.
So I think we need to move on and get over this.
Okay, 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 but, uh, uh, we can discuss that, but, uh. That later, but, okay, and, um. Even in the, the public works. Part of, uh, the budget. Um. There's an, there was nothing put in the budget for repairs, fire hydrants, general maintenance throughout the city. That was all. This, this budget was basically. Salaries, benefits. Through every department, uh, pretty much, and, and. Like I said, there was nothing budgeted in there for maintenance or anything, and.
Their budget, it covers all that.
It's online, Judge.
I know, I've got a copy right here, right in the, the part set. But there's.
Fire hydrants and maintenance parts are.
There, there was nothing budgeted in there.
I'm, I'm, I'm afraid you're putting out misinformation, and you don't need to be doing that, Judge.
I'm not putting out bad.
There is budgeted items in public works. For the maintenance of the streets and fire hydrants and everything that makes the city run.
Our guys stay busy constantly. Doing what they have to do and they do it within budget.
I mean, if, if we want to speak facts, let's speak facts.
Okay, alright, right here, let me see. Public Works. Garbage collection. Uh, other professional services.
They don't, they do not collect.
Minor tools, street signs.
They do not.
Vehicle supplies, minor tools.
They do not collect garbage.
Well, I know that, uh, I'm waste manager, but, uh, that, that's, um.
You're putting out a lot of bad information.
No, I'm not, this is right here, this is public works budget, annual budget, right here.
It says community service at Dunham.
Up there, and then public works.
Where'd it say, public works?
Public Works. Right there under, public works.
Community, community development.
Public Works.
Public Works, there you go.
Well, that's what I said, it was right there.
So, what, how much?
But, okay, now, we'll just move on from that, because there's nothing listed for what they, uh.
Everything they do is under their budget.
Okay. And we're supposedly, we have ninety-seven employees. How do, is the time sheet work? How do you know if they're here, if they're not here? Um, they're coming in late? They call in, uh, they don't do time sheets anymore with the departments, or?
No ma'am, we, um, we have, um. Adopted a system that's called ADP, and that is how we, um, calculate payroll, so they actually. Have their, uh, time, they can download an app on their phone. Um, and so we have moved away from some of the paper, uh, copies for efficiency purposes. Um, we also, um, if you're a salaried employee, um, you still have to, um. Put that information in, um, and each employee has a, an account. And, um, whether it's me or any other employee in the city, we all, uh, put in, so for exempt employees. Um, which are most of the leadership positions, even if we work over eight hours. Uh, we only get paid for eight hours. Um, for employees that work in the field or work overtime, they, um. They actually have a computer in the public works building that they can sign in on when they come in, in the morning time. Um, there are some employees that have an app and can, um, sign in as well, so. Uh, it just depends on the employee, but everybody clocks in, and they, uh, clock out for lunch. And then they clock back in for the afternoon, and then if they're on call for that week, uh, we have an on-call. Um, calendar that we utilize, and, um, each week. Um, if you're scheduled to work on call, for example, in public works. Um, then you have a on-call phone, and then you, um, are asked to, um. Come in and you receive overtime for that. That's just one example.
Okay, so, so it's, it's calling, like, they call in, it's not when they actually. Pull in the driveway here and get out of their car and walk into the computer and.
They have to walk into the computer, but they're, if you're on call, so there's a team of guys that are on call. And so, uh, depending on if you're on call, then you have to come in to the office and then you sign in. On the computer, if you're the on-call person, and then you go out, do the job, and then come back in and you sign out. And then for police and fire, they are under a different set of rules, they're under FLSA. And, um, which is the Fair Labor Stand- Standards Act, and so they are on shift. And, um, the shifts get paid. Um, it is a little more complicated in that if they call in sick or, um, they work it out with another, uh, employee or fellow, uh, coworker. For vacation or sick, it is calculated differently, and so, um, that ADP software helps to calculate. Um, that and then keep, um, our HR department up to date as well as finance on, um. Uh, meeting those requirements. They also get, uh, overtime and that is calculated, uh, according to FLSA, so. It, it's a bit more complex, um, depending on how our congresspeople, uh, change the rules, so we have to make sure that we are, um.
So, Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So. Miss City Administrator. We don't have big chief tablets and number two pencils anymore? Okay, thank you.
Okay, since you made that comment.
It was a good one, though.
Um. You can. Three thirty in the afternoon, this looks like a ghost town up here. So. Uh, I guess they're, they're all called out on the job or something about three to three fifteen?
They, um, so for public works, they, um. In the winter time, we actually, um, shift their schedules to meet daylight savings time. And, um, so they typically come in from about six, six-thirty to about three-thirty. So, the majority of the staff, um, will come in at six. And they'll work to about three-thirty, and then there is on-call staff that stays to five o'clock. And so on days that, um, we would have to do, uh, cutoffs or turn-ons for, um. For example, um, on the water meters, um, we have staff that is here from eight to five. But the majority of the staff, if they're coming in to make repairs or doing their day-to-day work, they do come in earlier. In the summer time, um, it is, um. Uh, because it gets so hot during the daytime, it, it actually is, um, a little more amenable for them to come in earlier and.
Yes, and get all burger, yeah, I understand that, I'm, I'm just asking about that. Cause I couldn't understand how you can just, um, I mean, you call in, you know, roll over, call in from bed and some. Clock, you know, if they're not talking to a human or clocking in a bunch of button or however they do it. But, um. Okay. That's kind of covered that. And I, I don't guess I can ask how many employees are on contract? That word from contract.
So we have quite a few, I can give you some examples, one of which, um, I think came before the council. So we do not, um, currently have planning staff, so we have a consultant that is working with us. Um, until we can, um, attract and recruit someone that is, um, able to, um, complete the job to the extent that the city is needing. Uh, we also have an engineering consultant, um, that works with the city. Um, Suzie Quinn is a contractor, she's a consultant, um, that has come on board, she works with SGR. Um, to provide interim city secretary services. Um, what we find with the consultants is that, um. They tend to have more experience, they can come in, hit the ground running, and, um, and. Uh, from a training standpoint, there is, um, little to no, uh, downtime. And so, um, when we work with companies like SGR, um, they can get us an interim person in to help us keep our operations. Moving forward until we're able to attract and recruit, uh, someone that can come in and do the job. Uh, many times for, from a staff perspective, um, if we're doing our day-to-day, and I'll use myself as, as the example. Um, it is very difficult to continue the day-to-day work and train someone. To get them where they would need to be, that would be of the caliber of someone like Suzie Quinn, who has done this business over twenty-five years.
I remember, yeah.
May the mayor, may I ask a follow-up question?
Do, we don't pay, or do we pay benefits and things for contracted employees?
So it ends up being a cost savings, um, and it's, if, if we hadn't hired for that position, so. If, you know, as of October, we had not, um, hired for a full-time planning person, we have cost savings in there. So that is where the other professional services come in, um, you know, we're still limited with our software, which is QuickBooks. And, you know, uh, Mayor Potem had made the request, um, probably about eight or nine months ago during the, um. Financials, that it was difficult to see what's included in the other professional services. So our, our challenge with that in QuickBooks is it would make for yet another line item that we would have to transfer over when we go to the new software. On the chart of accounts, and so if you make a new one, you have to keep all the line items in order to track the history, um, in QuickBooks, and so. As we're trying to work our way up to getting transitioned over, um, to the municipal fund software. We are trying to limit and maybe group or categorize that, and then if, if the council is interested in knowing what's, um, behind the other professional services. Um, we actually have that outlined in the budget, um, in our budget software, we can list what all those other professional services are, and certainly. We can bring that forward when, when we present the upcoming budget, when we start the budget process, which has already begun.
Are we still, are, do, why are we not advertising on our webpage? We have qualified. People here in town, uh. Work here, live here, educated people, but they, uh, there's. I never see anything on the webpage. Everything going through that hiring firm, which is costly, like a thousand dollars, close to a thousand, nine hundred something dollars every time you call them. And, uh, like, the one, uh, one week in there, there was five, five hundred. Well, that was like nine thousand or something, they bet hiring firm. That's just over and over, uh, but we've got, we've got.
We do advertise, um, we, you know, if there are people applying, um. I, I am not sure what they're applying for, uh, not all of our positions require education. Um, in many of our job descriptions, we'll look at education and/or experience, so it's not always a requirement. Um, the city does, um, require clearance, um, depending on the position, um, through a background process as well as, uh. You know, depending on what you're working in, if you're working in a financial, uh, position, then, you know, there is a credit check, and so. Those are things that we don't always know, you know, how that's gonna come out, um. Uh, with regard to, um, folks that apply for a job, so it, I'm, I'm unfortunately unable to speak. On whether or not someone is, has applied and why they may or may not have gotten, uh, an offer from the city.
Okay, um, just, um, I'm just going through here, there's just law firm, attorneys, law firms. Um, how many attorneys do we have on, other than Mr. Holla?
You have Mr. Holla, who acts as our prosecutor, as well as the city attorney. He is legal counsel for the EDC and CDC. He also, uh, reviews documents that, um, are related to any planning and zoning, uh, matters, and so that is all paid out of non-departmental. Um, the council approved a firm that is the firm, um, for an appeal. That is the only appealed, uh, case that the city has currently. Um, and so, uh, as you're aware, Mr. Judge Campbell is our municipal court judge, and he also has a, uh, firm, uh, as well.
Who, oh, okay, okay, who, who is, uh? Well, this is probably the law firm one.
Yeah, Mr.
Uh, Stillen Freeman, we paid them quite a bit of money, who is that?
So Stillen Freeman is the construction company that is building the public works and, um.
Police Department.
Police Department. So those are paid out of general fund because our bank. Uh, requires that the council open a separate account, um, in which we are in the process of doing for capital funds. So the finance department has paid it out of general fund, and those funds have to be repaid back to the general fund. So that is a capital project.
And sometimes quite greatly depends on those legal fees, it takes a lot to keep the fire chief in line.
Oh, oh, well, yeah.
But I can't see what all this has to do with what's going on. Our city has more money than it's ever had. We are, we was a three A city. We're a two A. That means a lot. And I, I don't see how picking and choosing out of that, that you're getting anything out of it.
Uh, well, just because we've got, we don't have to spend it all on salaries and wages and benefits.
It's not.
Um, it's, it's a lot of employees, uh.
We're supposed to have employees. Our city is growing.
We are a population of between sixty-five hundred and seven thousand. And to have ninety-seven employees and.
Yeah.
You never see it. I, I think, I, I don't think Ms. Lauer is arguing with the facts or, or Rona or the numbers. It sounds like she just has questions about it and she's asking Rona about it. That, that's what it sounds like.
Okay.
She'll be back in a moment. She'll be back in a minute.
Oh, I know, I'm, I'm.
I apologize.
Okay, um, when we hire these people, do they automatically go on, uh, they get their benefits? They from the start go? They're not on a trial period, seeing if you're gonna work out or not, or?
Yes, ma'am. It's, it's very difficult to compete with other cities that, um, offer benefits up, upfront. That is, um, unfortunately, a model that, um, many cities can no longer practice. Um, I understand that, um, in the personnel, previous personnel policy, uh, that was, uh, historical, um, practice, but that it just is, uh, a city or any employer, um, there is, you can't compete and keep, uh, good employees without offering benefits.
So that, that's, that's another benefit we give them. You've got everything. Start out top dollar and you've got all these, uh, insurance and, and then what if they, then, there's, um, if they don't, don't work out, or is anyone cross-trained? If you can't do this job, I've got this other one you might be able to do. You move in here.
Absolutely, absolutely. In fact, our public works department is probably doing the best job at that because they do both strew and stormwater, uh, operations and maintenance. And then they, um, also have a water, wastewater, uh, division in which, um, they have certified folks. And so if there are, uh, employees who would like to move up, uh, in the organization, they, they work with them to, uh, figure out what their goals are. And then, um, help to train them in that way as part of the, um, succession planning. Um, we, when, when I got here five years ago, uh, we only had one employee who had a C water license. And we have about five employees, um, who are now certified, um, with water and sewer licenses. And, and they stay. I have to look at Conspire with Campos because that was one of the things. Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Actually, our board official is the only one that had.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I don't have, I, you know, the, 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 the training, they all need training.
Yes, um, they, they go through safety training.
I'm not trying to step on any of the employees' feet. I'm just trying to get to the bottom of where all this money is being spent. So, where it's going, so. Okay, uh, now this one here, uh, conflict of interest, uh, I know you're on the AMV board, you're the city administrator and.
I am not on the AMV board. I work for the council and I work, um, as an employee, um, for type A in Titan.
That's conflict of interest, to have a paid job and then be getting paid for another job to the same place.
Let me ask you one thing.
The council, the council asked me to work as the economic development director.
Or, ma'am?
Do what?
Behind closed doors, you already went to this subject about Rona and, and our city secretary, didn't you?
But I don't, I don't mind. I, I mean, it's something that.
Well, this is, this is all in the budget, so.
Sure.
So that's, that's what I'm trying to discuss.
The council approved.
The council approved.
The council asked me, um, to be the economic development director, um, in this year's budget. Um, the council has approved a position for economic development director, but as you are aware, um, we have had a couple of, um, uh, hiccups and so we had to hire the, um, city secretary and we've had some other, uh, key hires that has delayed it, but certainly we, when we are able to advertise it, we will make sure that, um, and that position, um, is paid at a very, very, uh, low rate as to what it would cost, which would be six figures for an economic development director, I think.
Well, yeah, but anyway, it's still, you know, conflict of interest, protect a whole two titles.
I, I, I would respectfully disagree because the council asked me to fill that role.
And we put up in that way.
Okay.
I, I am actually paid by the Economic Development Corporation. And so that is a separate fund in the city that I am paid out of, that the council asked me to fill.
And, and they are allowed, the EDCs are allowed, and, and it's a good question, glad you brought it up cause it doesn't come up very often. But EDCs are allowed to use city resources. Now, I always strongly suggest that there's a paper trail, like what we got, uh, because five oh one, I believe it's five oh one point oh seven three of the local government code does allow the, or does require the city council to okay all the expenditures of the EC. They can spend anything without the council okaying them. But it is okay for the, um, uh, the EDC to pay the same, like, like many cities use the city secretary. And I think we did that, we, I think the council decided to change their mind on that a little bit, but it's very common for the city secretary to do a city secretary role for the city and get paid for that, but then also do basically records keeping for the EDC and get paid by the EDC. They're not paid by the city. They're paid by the EDC, cause they're supposed to pay their own bills. Believe it or not, the EDC getting quote-unquote free stuff from the city, uh, it sounds crazy, but it's true. It would be a violation of Article Three, Section Fifty-two of the Texas Constitution where political subdivisions, which EDCs are not political subdivisions, so that's important too. Law is very clear on that. But the political subdivision can't give away any of its money, credit, uh, anything to any individual entity, even an EDC. So the EDC, I mean, council may have authorized that, but ultimately it's the EDC that decided, hey, we wanna pay for this type of whatnot. So your question's a good one, I just wanna make sure I clear it out.
And, and there is an agreement that, um, it's an old agreement, it's coming from twenty thirteen, where the EDC actually pays the city for other internal services such as HR, finance. Um, and that is paid at a rate of five hundred dollars a month for both the EDC and the CDC. And so, um, certainly that is something that we brought up during budget, um, for a cost allocation study to really understand what the enterprise, we consider as special fund, enterprise fund, um, of, you know, are they really paying for the service that they're getting, um, for internal services just to process payroll, pay, uh, bills and that kind of stuff? Because that could be an additional relief to the general fund, which is where that, that money typically comes from.
So, uh, I don't, I don't recall of anything being approved until, you know, this, this came up, you know, about, uh, being on the, getting paid out of the, the boards.
It's been that way for tw- twenty years.
It's always been that way.
I was one of the ones that actually started to get the C's.
Been that for twenty years.
They've got paid positions in there, but it, uh, it's also, when you read up on conflict of interest, to hold two titles from the city.
May I ask a question to Mr. Holla? Uh, you said that it was general prac- or generally accepted for the EDC or CDC to use a city employee for record keeping or whatever.
Right.
Okay, if the city employee is paid by the city to be an administrator or a secretary or whatever, and then they also are, uh, working for the EDC or CDC and are paid by them, does that money go back into the general fund to reimburse? Or does it go to the person because they're working on city time?
That is a great question. So it's, there's, and there's two ways you can do it. You can, you can have someone that fills both, and, and the reason it's not, and I hear where you're coming from. You're talking about the AG opinion, the, the conflict of interest. They're talking about two positions of a monument where you get paid. Well, the EDC is not, they're not the city. They're not part of the city. So while you're correct that you can't hold two paid positions, positions of a monument is what it's called, from the city, that's not holding one from the city, cause it's the EDC. So it's separate. So now back to your question, cities actually do it differently. Sometimes what they'll do is the EDC will actually reimburse the city for use of, like Rona said, the, the copy paper or faxes or, I guess we don't use fax anymore, but, you know, that, that type of stuff. And then you're right, you do, sometimes they adjust someone's salary. They may go, okay, we're spending X amount of time with the city, so we're gonna adjust your, 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 your salary for that. Well, then we're going over here and you're spending this much time with the EDC. They're gonna give you the salary for X number of hours. And so there's, there's a couple of different ways to do that. And your, your question's a good one, that's really up to however the city wants to do it. Uh, they could say, hey, look, this person's doing dual roles, but we're being there, there, and it's, so it's fine. We don't care. Whatever they do, they work for, that's getting reimbursed. They're keeping up with it and it's getting reimbursed from the city. Or they can say, hey, we're gonna give you six of your hours a day for the city. That's what you're being paid. Then you're gonna get this amount of money over here, spend it two hours a day for the EDC. So there's a couple of different options, if that helps.
And in the budget, under, um, the position schedule, eighty percent of my time is spent in the city, as city administrator, and then point one oh is in EDC and point one oh is in CDC.
So you're actually paid by both committees?
Yes, yes.
Salary to you?
Yes, ma'am. We, it, it was actually.
But wait, wait a minute, wait, wait a minute, wait a minute. Now y'all are talk, y'all are trying to get to Ms. Rona. I remember when Myra was here and Myra was doing this same thing.
Myra was paid too. I know it. I've, I've, I've seen it.
I, I think they're just asking about it. It's a good question. The answer to your question is yes, ma'am. That's, yeah, that, that's kind of how it's done, yes. Uh, I mean, if she, if she was gonna be paid, you know, some city administrators get two hundred thousand dollars. They, but they say two hundred thousand dollars, they'll get it, cause I've got one another city that's so much, that industry, yes. But he, he gets one eighty from the city and he gets twenty K from the EDC to do work there. Cause remember, the, the, uh, non-exempt employees, they don't, we don't really care about their hours, okay? And, and now, hear me out. We wanna make sure they're at the office and we wanna make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. But if they work two hours a day or eighteen hours a day, it's all the same. So keeping up with that, I mean, you wanna know where they are and make sure they're available and, you know, things like that. Uh, but, but in terms of, of answering your question directly, there's not a need when you talk about a non-exempt employee. It'd be different if they were hourly. So I gave you an example, cause I thought you were asking about hourly. But the, 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 the salary employees, they get one set salary, period, whether they spend twenty hours a day in, in the thing, or working on whatever, or four hours a day working on. That's just, and you know that, cause you're in the industry. That's just how salary, salary works. Now maybe some cities may wanna adjust that from some of their salaries, and that's okay. I mean, they're, they're welcome to do that, but that's, answer your question about how it works.
And, and that also goes back to the cost allocation study. That study was done, or what, uh, however it was derived for EDC and CDC was in twenty thirteen. That is not at all what the city is doing for either of those corporations because those two boards, they need a board secretary and the city secretary, if, if, if she has the capacity, is, would be the one who would be doing it just to, because it is very similar to the council, um, and what those requirements are. Um, there are, uh, quite a few, um, you know, specialties that fall within either of those corporations such as, you know, tax increment, reinvestment zone, um, bringing the consultants on board for that. That is something that, um, you potentially couldn't afford in the industry for that kind of expertise. And so having, having the ability to go out for that is, um, critical for the city and the extent that we are growing, so. Um, certainly, if that is something that the council, um, as part of the budget process, which we went over in detail, would like to do differently, um, which the council has said to hire an economic development director. And I am happy, happy to find somebody because it takes more than twenty percent of the time, um, to actually do it well. And this community deserves for someone to have it a hundred percent. But at the time during COVID, um, I was asked by the council to serve in this position and we vetted it and, um, it's been in the last two budgets.
Okay, um, but, uh, uh, well, it, it, it looks, you get paid whether they meet or not. Like they hadn't met in a year, then you still get paid.
They have met.
So, or, I mean, not this year, last year, whatever.
They, they, so even if they don't meet, there are incentives that we have to work with the governor's office on. Um, those, uh, temp agreements, those all run through the EDC and CDC. We, um, answer requests for information from the Dallas Regional Chamber. Um, there is a lot of administrative work behind the scenes just to even get to a meeting of the EDC or the CDC. The last two land deals that were done, those were done through the EDC, um, for the property that's across the street and then the property that we recently purchased on Dallas Avenue. Um, so even if there's not a meeting that, um, is being conducted, there is quite a bit of work behind the scenes, just in similar fashion with the council. We only meet twice a month for the council, but there is a significant amount of work being done by multiple staff members, um, outside of a meeting.
Okay, I've got, um, I'm, I'm just back to the end of my list, so. Um, why are we the last people to know the council of any changes made? And this one still just gets me. Why wouldn't the city council notify, uh, or put on the agenda requesting to make changes, hour changes in city hall? Why wouldn't, you know, all the depart- and, and all the departments, you know, changing the hours to this, um, it's always been eight to five, but I know that's old school and everybody changes stuff up. Uh, but at least it should've been brought before the council and we know what's going on other than walking down to the door, right on the door, why isn't anybody here, you know? We had to find out from a note on the front door, uh, that y'all had changed. You know, we had to find out from a note on the front door, uh, that y'all had changed hours.
That's just on Friday, though.
Do what?
That's just on Friday.
She said, she was like, hey, why didn't anybody bother to tell us? I get that.
So we, we said, yes.
Cause you're so, well, how'd even come up here on Friday, you know, and I thought, ah, they're, they're closed, you know, Friday afternoon.
If there is a different way that the council would like for me to communicate with them, I am happy to do that.
I think we should be notified, because we were clueless, people would call and say, why City Hall closed before?
We did notify the council, we sent it out, we didn't bring it before the council. Um, but we definitely notified the council via.
I didn't know anything about it until, you know, the, coming up there. And also, I understand that our drop box weren't that down, uh, there's people that's lived here forever, uh, they depend on that drop box, running late Friday afternoon, coming in and dropping their car, uh, paying the water bill. So, uh.
The drop box is back open.
It's back open.
Yes ma'am.
Okay, alright.
So there is a kiosk that we have out front. The issue we were having is that there were residents who were accustomed to, uh, leaving cash, um, in the drop box. And, um, it was a liability for the employees. Uh, it really was a no-win situation, because sometimes, um, the, there was an allegation that the, that the money was not the correct amount. And so we, we are trying to deter, uh, the cash dropping in the drop box. With the kiosk, you can actually make a cash deposit, you can deposit checks. And, um, uh, we have since changed that, we allow it, but we say, uh, if at all possible, uh, our residents would not drop cash in it, um, because it can be a liability for the, the good folks who work very hard for this community. And, um, they, it, it's difficult to defend themselves when they are accused of something not being correct.
If I may, I've something to say about that, too. Actually, some of the citizens were calling me that, uh, they didn't know how to use it, but actually they like it now.
Oh, the kiosks?
Yes, they do.
Well, yeah, but there, there's some that, you know, they're running late and they want to get there Friday afternoon before they.
Get back intact team on him. I've had some people calling me about not being able to drop the water bill off. I was one of them that was a very somewhat irritated, um, cause when I tried to use a kiosk, it would not work. After investigations with the staff, it takes a five-digit ID number.
Yes.
And if you're old school, and you've been here for a while, you only have a three-digit ID number. And so the water department is working to fix the ID numbers. Is to put zero zeros in front of your three-digit number, and then you will be able to use the machine. And so, you know, if, if, until then, maybe, a note, you know, I told the people and the, the ladies at the water department, then take some kind of note up there, your ID number requires five digits. So anyway, I'm hoping that it will be more user-friendly now in the future. Understanding that for old-time employees, or old-time citizens like myself, who've been here for a while.
I always walk in, I want a receipt.
I do have a question, if I may. Um, if I remember correctly, um, when we were discussing the budget, we actually specifically allotted for some seasonal employees. And as we're coming into the mowing season, I would like to know if that's being done? If we're, if we're getting some extra help for the summer months?
Yes ma'am, so, uh, last summer, we actually, um, got them, so they are part-time, it was for part-time employees that you suggested, thank you. And they were brought on in the summertime, right before the summertime, and they were worked as full-time employees. But it was only for half a year, same, same numbers, um, as opposed to working the same amount of employees halftime for the entire year. But the summertime is when they need the most help, and so they, they recruit so that they'll have a full staff in the summertime, during growing season, to be able to help with mowing and help with vacations, yes, and help with our new, um, because one of the things we were anticipating is accepting the Green Ribbon Project, which is, um, almost, almost, we're about ninety-eight percent, um, complete and able to accept, and then that will become our responsibility. But right now, it's the contractor that's doing it, so yes, they have utilized, this will be the second year that they.
Are you talking about the beautification of the overpass and all that?
Yes ma'am.
The other overpasses?
Yes.
And you said when they complete it, it will become our responsibility?
It's our maintenance responsibility.
Okay, because last time I discussed this, I believe I was told that was always Tech Dot, and we couldn't do it.
That's correct.
So that's not right?
That, no, that, it is, yes, that's still right. So Tech Dot has three contracts, they have a litter contract, a mowing contract, and a, I don't know what it's called, where if it's big stuff that gets dropped on the freeway, they have a contractor that comes out and does that. They will still mow in the areas that are not the beautification portion of it. We are responsible for the intersections. So the, it's now four intersections, because they took Malory Bridge off. So those four intersections, we're responsible for keeping the litter, uh, picked up and for the, uh, maintenance of that, which is making sure that the landscaping stays thin, that it stays mowed around where the landscaping was installed. Tech Dot will still do the other portions of it.
Okay, so Tech Dot will actually mow the side of the highway, but the intersections where the overpasses are will be our responsibility for mowing and litter.
For mowing and litter for those, that portion of it, during, for that part that's in the project area.
The, the whole overpass?
No, where the landscaping is, so just where the landscaping is.
Well, I'm just, where I'm coming from is, I just want it to look kept.
Yes.
And not abandoned like it has been. So if that's something that's going to be our responsibility, I want us to take it seriously.
So we will bring during budget, I think Wayne is already researching it. Um, in other cities, they have, because of that same concern, they have, um, asked Tech Dot to, um, give them an alternative for what the city could receive in, um, exchange, um, for the city doing it. Now, in a city that I worked in previously, um, we had, um, two, uh, probably about five miles of, uh, freeway frontage, and the amount was not that much back then, and that's what Wayne is getting, is the information to be able to, um, provide to you all during the budget, um, to see if it's, if that's worth it. Um, in the previous city, it was about thirty thousand, it was for frontage along I thirty-five and I twenty, and we were able to buy one, one piece of equipment, and we still had to pay the, we had to bid the contractor and be able to mow it and pick up everything, so it wasn't.
Are we on topic?
Um, well, it's still talking about financials, sir. So that's, I, I just want to, it, you know, for future budget discussions, um, you know, we'll bring that information for the council to be able to discuss and decide if, you know, if that's something that we want to do or place in the budget.
Okay, in closing my comments, I would personally like to thank Councilmember Slough for her diligence in going through the financials. Because when we were elected to sit in these chairs, we were made stewards of the people's money that we collect by taxes or revenue or whatever. And I feel like that we have a responsibility to know what we're doing with that money.
Yes ma'am.
And yeah, it may be spent here and there and here and there, but when people that elected us ask us questions about it, we need to be knowledgeable and know that it's being spent as they wanted it to be. And so I wanted to thank Ms. Phyllis for her diligence in going through this, because whether it be a question that puts someone on the spot or not, we just want to know.
And just to add to that, uh, Mayor Protim, I, from a staff standpoint, we are here to answer questions, whether it's in public. I, I don't feel as though it's on the spot. I believe it's my responsibility to answer to the council, however many questions there are. Um, I feel as though we, if, that is my job to take the time necessary for you all to be able to answer to citizens. And we have more, um, there is more, we, we've only scratched the surface in terms of, of what, uh, we discuss here. Uh, unfortunately, because of the limitation on our financial software, it is a lot that you, you don't necessarily see in that report that we would like to get to you, as well as what your strategic vision is and how we are accomplishing that. We, we absolutely want you all to know that, and we want residents to know. And our doors are always open, uh, whether it's during, uh, office hours or after hours, if that, if that works better, we can, we will sit down with you and walk through every line, if that is what you would like, and we'll pull the boxes out. We'll pull the boxes out and, and show you exactly what we collect, we want you to know, we want to be transparent in, in our processes. So we are grateful that you spent your precious time, Councilwoman Slough, to, uh, go through the financials, and we are here to answer any future questions that you might have.
I'm just doing what I was elected for, that's, uh, was a promise and I'm keeping it. But I do have one more request, and then I'm through. In open session, I'm requesting that we get our financials monthly. Each month, it doesn't have to be the first of the month, you know, you know, cause that's when everything's working, middle of the month, whatever, monthly.
Ms. Ronan.
So we, I, if, hold on one second.
And it won't be this, this.
It won't be, so what Kristen and I talked about, uh, earlier this week is providing you all with a calendar that basically outlines what our finance cutoff is, and then, and showing you exactly based upon how our meetings fall. So we're the first and third Thursday, and it doesn't, in, because of the limitations on the software, we are sometimes, like with February, we miss the ability to, um, provide, um, because of the cutoff, it wouldn't have been until this meeting. And so we, we were going to have a lengthy discussion about these, which are about four months' worth of finances. We will deliver the finances electronically, and then that will be enough time prior to, two weeks prior to, and we'll place it on the following agenda, um, and then you will have that time to be able to review it. But we will provide a calendar in the April seventeenth meeting that will walk you through the entire year, and what that looks like by way of council meetings, whether or not we're going to have council meetings, what other meetings we cover, because we do cover other meetings as staff liaisons, and then, um, and where, um, certain things that you, that we are required to provide to you, where all those things fall throughout the year. So, um, we will have that for you at the next, next meeting.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I move to call the question.
Yes, sir.
Is there a second?
One second.
Okay. I didn't have, I didn't understand your motion, or what?
Call the question. Let's vote on it.
May I get a motion?
It's been moved and seconded, Mayor.
Okay. May I have your vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
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 Alright, now, now we, now we call a question.
No, we adjourn.
Now we call the question.
Okay. The question, sir.
Addressing the, the, approving the finances, number nine, number nine. I move, I'm, I move to approve the financials, Mayor.
One second.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought that's what we were going to.
No, we, I wanted, I wanted discussion in.
Yes.
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 Okay. All four?
Yes.
It was all yes, it was all yes.
All yes, okay, five to zero. Okay, now, I thought we just did number ten.
It was time?
Those were through January, not through February.
So before, um, if, if I may, Mayor, Mayor Protim and members of council, we, we are asking to table this item's discussion tonight in order to get you.
Let's just not take any action.
No action.
That's a great idea.
No action.
Mayor, I move to adjourn.
We are adjourned at eight fifty-one.